Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. This council is now coming to order. Will all members please take your seats? All visitors, we are asking you to retire to the seats outside the rails. And please take any sidebar conversations outside of the council chambers. Before proceeding, I will ask all of those who are present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor Billy Ivory Jr. of the Testimony of Faith Church of God in Christ. He is here today as the guest of Councilmember Cindy Bass. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Thank you. I bring you greetings from the Testimony of Faith Church of God in Christ, located at 4300 North Broad Street in Philadelphia, here. All the way we've come, God has brought us. And all that we know, God has taught us. And all that we are, God has made us. Let us pray even now. Father, we thank you even right now for this great opportunity to speak to these of your people and to pray, even bringing forth our mayor, Parker, in the city of Philadelphia that I love. But God, I have to pause quickly to ask you to quiet the storm in the South. And as you do this, remember us in Jesus' name. Now, Lord, we pray for our president, Kenyatta Johnson, and all the members of City Council. We're asking God that you would direct, that you would deliver, and that you would demonstrate yourself through each and every member. We're praying for an anointing that would make it easy to make the right decisions in the name of Jesus. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. Speak to us individually and collectively. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
The chair thanks the pastor for the invocation. Council will now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 26th, 2024. The chair recognizes Deputy Whip Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 26th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 26th, 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is the request for leaves of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Prior to acknowledging the requests for leaves of absence, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to thank Councilmember Phillips for acknowledging Shirley Gregory Wade today and because of that acknowledged the presence of my mom, my grandmom, and also my niece. Welcome to Philadelphia City Council. So on behalf of the members of council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Thomas and Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you very much. Leave is granted. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks on behalf of the minority.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you very much. The chair thanks the council member. The chair recognizes now Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. I do see Philadelphia finest in this room. Let's give the Philadelphia Police Department a real big round of applause. We thank you for your hard work and your dedication to our great city. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Ketsey Lizada, who will present a resolution recognizing and honoring remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphia artists and journalists during Hispanic Heritage Month. Would Clotilde Jimenez and those accompanying him want to make sure I get it right? Please join the council member at the podium. Also joining Councilwoman Ketsey Lizada during this presentation is Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Rue Landau, Councilmember O'Rourke, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, and Councilmember Jamie Gaudier.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being with us today. Today, it's a long resolution, and so I just want to say some very brief remarks. I want to say thank you to all of you who have taken advantage of participating in one or several of the Hispanic Heritage Month events throughout the city of Philadelphia. I hope that you were able to learn a little bit more about those who are doing the work in the Latino community and across the city as we work to promote and preserve the Latino culture of our city. If you've not taken advantage, there is still time. Hispanic Heritage Month ends October 15th, and there are still several events. Please make sure that you visit my office and grab one of the flyers where it lists the rest of the events that are still to come during this month. I'd like to thank my colleagues for joining me this morning and all of our guests. This resolution recognizes and honors the remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphians who have done work to make sure that all of our contributions are recognized. Recognizing and honoring remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphia artists and journalists during Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Philadelphia is a city of the arts and the birthplace of incredibly talented individuals, these individuals contribute to the arts through their work, their education legacies, their culinary talents, and the role they play in representing their community. And...
Whereas places like Tala, Puerto Rico, provide spaces for Hispanic and Latino art to be displayed as well as making space for education, the community, and local events. And we honor Argenis Figueroa, a journalist based in Philadelphia who has spent his entire broadcast career reporting local and national news to Philadelphia's Latino community. And whereas a reporter, Figueroa has been recognized for work informing and supporting the development of the Hispanic community in the tri-state area for over four years. In his reports, he highlights and investigates information and resources that federal, state, and local governments have available for communities to improve their quality of life. And...
Whereas we honor the works of Clotilde Jimenez, who was born in Philadelphia and grew up to become a world-renowned artist, who had the privilege and honor of being commissioned to design posters for the Paris Olympic Games and the Paralympic Games respectively. Clotilde is a multidisciplinary American artist who works with ceramics, collage, painting, printmaking, and sculpture. And...
Whereas Clotilde Jimenez committed to a life as an artist when he was a teenager, living in Philadelphia. The first major step in his career was when he enrolled at Charter High School for Architecture and Design, a school that granted opportunities for at-risk children, creative, ambitious. And...
Geisha Torres is a journalist based in Philadelphia and an immigrant who made a major career shift from being a national broadcaster back home in Venezuela to focusing on uplifting and supporting her new community in Philadelphia. And... And whereas Torres was born and raised in Venezuela and has worked in the broadcast news industry for over 20 years. Back home, she was a sports reporter and anchor for Meridiano TV and a trailblazer as the first woman in her country to serve as a play-by-play commentator for the NBA and anchor the most popular sports program in the country. And...
Whereas we honor Nizza Rosario, a self-taught Caribeña ceramic artist born in the Bronx and raised in North Philadelphia. Nizza is from La Isla del Encanto, Puerto Rico, and her practice has allowed her to rekindle a sense of deep and meaningful ancestral connection. And... Whereas as an artist, Nizza Waleska creates innovative vessels based on traditional forms and adorns them with Taino symbols. Her indigenous Puerto Rican Taino heritage serves as a strong inspiration. Nizza was introduced to ceramic art by her high school art teacher and then continued her education through the clay studio. She is a Claymobile teaching artist and community engagement assistant at the Clay Studio as well as a resident of South Kensington. Now, therefore be it...
Be it resolved that the council of the city of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphia artists and journalists during Hispanic Heritage Month. Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Clotilde Jimenez for remarks.
Hello. Well, I would like to say thank you to the esteemed Philadelphia City Council for this honor and for honoring us, artists and people that work in the creative industry. I would just like to say a few words that some things that I've learned along the way, that art really has the power to change perspective and how we live and see each other in the world. And Philadelphia, growing up here, really has shifted me and molded me as a man in a way that I see myself and how I want to project and then move forward in the future to shape a better image of our people, of Philadelphia. And I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It's not easy being an artist and creating a career, but we do it every day. We get up and we work in the studio and we read and we write. And thank you. And I just want to close by saying, you know, thank you to the council. But all success and honor belongs to God, and he bestows it upon whom he pleases. So I thank God as well for the recognition. So, thank you.
Council will be at ease. At this time, the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Ketsey Lizada, who presented a resolution honoring prominent public servants during Hispanic Heritage Month who contribute to the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians. Would Albert Martinez and Pedro Rosario and those accompanying them, please join the council member at the podium? And joining Councilwoman Lizada for her presentation is Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Rue Landau, Councilmember O'Rourke, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, and Councilmember Jamie Gaudier.
City Hall is the safest place in the city.
I don't think I ever felt this safe before in this chamber. And y'all stick around until public comment. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Ketsey Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. Recognizing and honoring prominent public servants during Hispanic Heritage Month who contribute to the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians, whereas the health and wealth of Philadelphia should be reflected in the quality of life of all its citizens. The individuals honored by this legislative body strive to create a city and a society in which the needs of the body have been fulfilled and addressed. And...
Whereas these individuals ask not how much, but how good. Their services and actions can serve the people. Their work seeks to increase quality of life, raising the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians through what they do. And whereas Philadelphia is a city of great promise and challenge, great promise and challenge, in which some of us may enjoy good lives, but far too many remain trapped by poverty and inequality. And...
Whereas we honor Alba Martinez, who leads the charge in changing the way we shape commerce in our city. Martinez has developed the Grow Philadelphia strategic roadmap aimed at streamlining business processes, driving inclusive growth, revitalizing commercial corridors, and positioning Philadelphia as a global business hub with a skilled, performance-driven workforce. And whereas her nonprofit and government work include leading the United Way of Southeastern Pennsylvania, where she has introduced a results-driven funding model, and as Philadelphia's Commissioner of Human Services, where she reduced the number of children in foster care by 50%, while DHS also began allocating $100 million of investment into the creation of a prevention system. At the Congreso de Latinos Unidos, she launched Pennsylvania's first Latina domestic violence program and a carpenters' union training initiative. And...
Whereas we look to honor Deputy Commissioner Pedro R. Rosario for his promotion to Deputy Commissioner as the first Latino officer to hold the position in the 226-year history of law enforcement in the city of Philadelphia. And...
Whereas Deputy Commissioner Rosario was sworn in on January 11th at the 24th and 25th Police District stationed at 3901 Whittaker Avenue. It was a historical day. Deputy Commissioner Rosario has served 27 years in the police department, totaling 30 dedicated and honorable years of service to the city of Philadelphia. During his service, Deputy Commissioner Rosario was decorated 12 times, receiving medals for his bravery and heroism. And...
Whereas we are called to honor Dr. Jamile Tez Lieberman, who graduated from Drexel University's Doranceife School of Public Health with a Doctor of Public Health degree in June 2022, where she completed a dissertation on the mental health impacts of parental deportation among U.S. citizen children of Mexican immigrants, exploring the role of anti-immigrant and anti-Latino discrimination. And... Whereas Dr. Lieberman was selected as a Global Alliance for Training in Health Equity Research, or GAEH, fellow, working with the National Institute for Public Health of Mexico on COVID-19 orphanhood initiatives. Dr. Tez Lieberman has made significant contributions to public health through her work with the Latino Health Collective in Philadelphia and the DRPH Coalition, including serving on a task force for the Tulay River Indian Tribe in California. And...
Whereas we recognize David Pena, a restaurateur based in Philadelphia and a community organizer focused on celebrating culture and heritage in Philadelphia's Latino community. And whereas Pena is a born leader who has taken bold action throughout his life. He moved to Mexico City on his own at age 14 and ran a kitchen at a local restaurant by the time he was 17, catching the attention of other chefs, artists, and celebrities. When he was 19, he immigrated to Philadelphia, where he started again from the bottom of the restaurant industry and quickly worked his way up, purchasing a restaurant of his own, Tomalex, delicious by the way, in 2011 and expanding to a second location in 2024. Now, therefore be it...
Therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors our prominent public servants during Hispanic Heritage Month who contribute to the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians. Congratulations to all.
The chair recognizes Deputy Commissioner Pedro Rosario and Commissioner Alba Martinez. Sure. Deputy Commissioner Pedro Rosario for remarks.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Council President, for this honor. I can't tell you all how humbled I am by today's ceremony. I just really want to be brief. You know, I want to tell you something that my parents always would tell me, and it haunts me to this day. If not me, then who? If not me, then who? And I know my colleagues in council here today, my family in blue, my wife that's standing next to me. We understand that call to service, right? And unfortunately, today in society, it's not something that's promoted in high regard. But it's very important that we, as a city, as an organization, as a society, continue to push that narrative. If not me, then who? I want to thank the mayor for giving me the privilege to serve in this position. Commissioner Beffel for showing the confidence in me to start or to continue this initiative. But I especially want to a special shout out to the Kensington Caucus, who have allied with doing this work together collaboratively, especially Councilwoman Lizada. Thank you for your tired leadership. You know, the work being done here is so crucial, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to present our community, the Latino community, in these efforts. And I want all of you to understand that together we're making differences. But it's not about Pedro Rosario. It's not about the police department. It's about all of us collaborative, working together, and understanding the significance of this. and understanding the significance of the work that we're doing in our community. Every day, our officers, many of whom are standing behind me, and our community members are working together to tackle these challenges. And they're not easy by any means. And ensuring that we're safe, we're making our community safe, fostering trust, and more importantly, creating opportunities for dialogue and important conversation to come up with a sustainable solution to deal with my specific challenge, the issues in Kensington. The positive impact of our collaboration is evident, and it reinforces the power of unity and shared purpose. So, one last time. If not me, then who? Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms... The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Will the Chief Clerk read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution entitled "Appointing Bridgette Foy to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District", and a resolution appointing George Riley to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Robert Perry to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Ivan Joseph to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution appointing Gil Aronst to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deconveying title to 2123 Vernon Street, located in the 2nd Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 532 West Offen Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution reappointing Howard Warzac to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And a resolution appointing Rick Carrion to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And a resolution confirming the appointment of James Engler as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November 16, 2026. And a resolution confirming the appointment of Nelson Diaz as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November 16, 2028. Council President, there are no other communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be presented in the journal. I want to take a moment to acknowledge we have students in our balcony from Richard Allen Preparatory Charter School. Could you stand, let's give them a round of applause. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge the Mural Arts Program is here today. We're recognizing them for four decades of transforming communities. Jane Gold and her team is here. They could stand to be recognized as well, if they're still here. We love Mural Arts. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Mural Arts. I have, we have two privileged resolutions. One introduced on your behalf, Council President, and four bills today.
That's four privileged resolutions and two non-privileged resolutions. Okay.
A resolution honoring and recognizing Mural Arts Philadelphia for four decades of transforming communities through public art and social engagement. A privileged resolution.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring Word Radio on the occasion of their Founder's Day, which memorializes the late owner-founder Walter P. Lomax Jr., M.D., and recognizing the station's role as the voice of the African-American community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And an ordinance to amend Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Metairie Avenue, Park Avenue, and Godfrey Avenue.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 6618 Castor Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19149, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 2nd Street between Roosevelt Boulevard and Ashdale Street, Champlin Street between North 3rd Street and North 4th Street, North 6th Street between Grange Avenue and Chue Avenue, Fairhill Street between Grange Avenue and Chue Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 6233 North Broad Street, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two resolutions on your behalf, one privileged and one non-privileged.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged and non-privileged resolutions, please?
A non-privileged resolution renaming the 1400 block of Sansom Street Judith M. Von Seldenick Way in honor of Judith M. Von Seldenick, founder and chair of the esteemed diversified search group, a leading executive search firm committed to advancing women into leadership positions across both local and global sectors.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold quarterly hearings that include monthly reporting requirements to discuss the fiscal position and overarching social impact goals of the city, including and as related to the five-year plan and reporting requirements set forth in the Quarterly City Manager's Report, QCMR, and as submitted to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, PICA.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gotti Air.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill for introduction.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Business Income and Receipts Taxes" to reinstate and revise the substantial business tax credit by increasing the total tax credit amount, by extending the tax year through which the tax credit is made available, and by increasing the number of businesses eligible to receive the tax credit, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues and viewing public. Today I offer two privileged and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the members of the Links Incorporated, Philadelphia's chapter, and Delaware Valley chapter, a privileged resolution.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 16, 2024 as the day of national concern about young people and gun violence in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution to be referred to committee, appointing Rick Carrion to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a resolution to be referred to committee reappointing Howard Warzac to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ru Landau.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have two privileged resolutions today.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing National Coming Out Day on October 11, 2024, in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 7 to October 11, 2024 as Digital Inclusion Week in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Mecatia Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer three non-privileged resolutions.
Will the clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 1766 through 72 North Bodine Street, 2244 Hope Street, and 2246 Hope Street in the 7th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 2271 North Philip Street in the 7th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to convene and investigate the processes and effectiveness of the current and past diversion programs in relation to individuals suffering from substance abuse disorder in the Kensington area.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer four privileged resolutions and on your behalf, five bills.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Point Breeze Avenue between Moore Street and Mifflin Street, Rosewood Street between Jackson Street and Wolf Street, Dorn Street between Snyder Avenue and McKean Street, Garnett Street between Snyder Avenue and McKean Street, Mifflin Street between South 20th Street and South 21st Street, Chadwick Street between Jackson Street and Passianke Avenue, South 22nd Street between McKean Street and Mifflin Street, Mifflin Street between South 30th Street and South 29th Street, Colorado Street between Snyder Avenue and McKean Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Mifflin Street between South 23rd Street and South 22nd Street, South 21st Street between Moore Street and Mifflin Street, Bouvier Street between McKean Street and Snyder Avenue, South 15th Street between Snyder Avenue and Jackson Street, Hick Street between Moore Street and Morris Street, Mifflin Street between South 19th Street and South 18th Street, Hick Street between Jackson Street and Snyder Avenue, Dudley Street between South 18th Street and South 19th Street, Mole Street between Jackson Street and Snyder Avenue, Lambert Street between McKean Street and Mifflin Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Can all cell phones be placed on silent and/or vibrate? Please proceed.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Corley Street between Tasker Street and Morris Street, Wilder Street between 21st Street and 20th Street, Myrtlewood Street between Dickinson Street and Tasker Street, Alter Street between South 18th Street and South 17th Street, South 17th Street between Tasker Street and Morris Street, South 16th Street between Morris Street and Tasker Street, Hick Street between Morris Street and Tasker Street, Titan Street between South 20th Street and Point Breeze Avenue, South 16th Street between Tasker Street and Dickinson Street, South 16th Street between Reed Street and Wharton Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Garnett Street between Snyder Avenue and McKean Street, Wharton Street between South 24th Street and South 25th Street, Bucknell Street between Oakford Street and Federal Street, Cleveland Street between Dickinson Street and Tasker Street, Dickinson Street between South 24th Street and South 23rd Street, Dickinson Street between South 22nd Street and South 23rd Street, South 32nd Street between Grace Ferry Avenue and Wharton Street, Morris Street between South 21st Street and South 20th Street, Dudley Street between South 19th Street and South 20th Street, South 21st Street between Morris Street and Moore Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Elmwood Avenue between South 63rd Street and South 64th Street, Greenway Avenue between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, South 67th Street between Greenway Avenue and Upland Street, Yocum Street between Lloyd Street and South 72nd Street, Gray's Avenue between South 62nd Street and South 63rd Street, Dewey Street between Elmwood Avenue and Beust Avenue, South 61st Street between Beust Avenue and Elmwood Avenue, 22nd Street between Dickinson Street and Reed Street, Ellsworth Street between South 18th Street and South 17th Street, Tasker Street between Point Breeze Avenue and South 23rd Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of October 6 through October 12 as Emergency Nurses Week in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution joining the city of Pittsburgh and calling on Congress to pass H.R. 9002, the Revitalizing Downtowns and Main Streets Act.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating President Jimmy Carter for his historic 100th birthday.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October 14, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Philadelphia, honoring and commemorating... Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Philadelphia, honoring and commemorating the achievements, traditions, and contributions of American Indians also known as Indigenous Peoples.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged res- I'm sorry.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. I got two privileged resolutions today, but I'd just like to take a moment to have my two honorees stand. First, we have Elizabeth Liz Taylor. She is receiving the two thousand and twenty-four David McCullough Teaching Prize for Excellence in American Public History, and everybody knows I'm a history guy. So Liz, could you please stand? Thank you, Liz. And we have in the house today two-time champion Tim Witherspoon. Would you please rise to be acknowledged? All right, Tim. Heavyweight champ, that's right.
Heavyweight champ, that is.
That's right. Thank you, Tim.
South Philly too, so.
South Philly, that's right. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Member Harity.
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Elizabeth Taylor, tenth and eleventh-grade Social Studies teacher at Masterman High School and recipient of the two thousand and twenty-four David McCullough Teacher Prize for Excellence in American Public History.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Tim Witherspoon for his legacy as a two-time heavyweight world champion.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Minority Whip O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution and two privileged resolutions I'd like to introduce.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privilege and non-privileged resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill nine-nine-nine, also known as the Death Penalty repeal bill, to abolish the death penalty in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing September thirtieth through October sixth, twenty-twenty-four, as Week Without Driving in the City of Philadelphia, honoring all Philadelphians who participated, and encouraging all Philadelphians to join efforts to reduce reliance on automobiles and fossil fuels.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have one bill and two privileged resolutions for today.
I have one more privileged resolution for Councilmember O'Rourke. A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia Theater Company on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have one bill and two privileged resolutions for today's consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll. Will the Chair please read- would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing the Striking From City Plan numbers two-nine-two and three-two-one, an abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for gas main purposes located along the southwesterly side of Ashburner Street, southeast of Hegerman Street, and extending southwestwardly therefrom, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the month of October twenty-twenty-four as Manufacturing Month in the City of Philadelphia, and further honoring Advanced Six for its contributions and dedication to the manufacturing industry in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October twenty-twenty-four as Polish-American Heritage Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla. Welcome.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three non-privileged, one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privilege and non-privilege resolutions?
A privileged resolution designating the week of Sunday, October thirteenth, through Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, as Italian-American Heritage Week in the City of Philadelphia. This is done in celebration of the countless contributions Italian-Americans have given to our country in honoring Lisa Ann Walter as the Grand Marshal of the two thousand and twenty-four Philadelphia Italian-American Heritage Parade.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A non-privileged resolution appointing Bridget Foy to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District. A non-privileged resolution.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing George Riley to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Robert Perry to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Ivan Joseph to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Gil Ahrens to the Board of Directors for the South Street Head House District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Deputy Whip Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions on your behalf, one privileged, one non-privileged resolution, and two bills.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bills and non-privileged and privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Jaren Boots Ennis, the reigning International Boxing Federation IBF World Welterweight Champion, for his outstanding achievements in professional boxing and work in the community.
Boots. This bill will be ref- this resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of James Engler as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Nelson Diaz as a member of the Board of Ethics to serve in the term ending November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-eight.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Fairhill Street between Lindley Avenue and Allegheny Avenue, Fairhill Street between Ruscombe Street and Rockland Street, Ruscombe Street between North Fourth Street and North Fifth Street, North Fourth Street between Roosevelt Boulevard and Loudon Street, North Twenty-third Street between Lippincott Street and Allegheny Avenue, Bethlehem Pike between Chestnut Hill Avenue and Summit Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Carlisle Street between Rockland Street and Wyndham Avenue, North Fifteenth Street between Loudon Street and Rockland Street, North Fifteenth Street between Rockland Street and Ruscombe Street, Burbidge Street between Washington Lane and Duval Street, McKean Avenue between Hansberry Street and Queen Lane, Knox Street between Chelton Avenue and Price Street, Washington Lane between McCallum Street and Burbidge Street, Pelham Street between Hoarder Street and Upsell Street, Ross Street between Sharpneck Street and Upsell Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions, one on your behalf.
Will the clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing October tenth as World Mental Health Day and National Depression Screening Day in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing October twenty-twenty-four as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and promoting activities that provide education, early detection, and support for all.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I mistakenly mentioned I had four privileged resolutions, Mr. President. Today I have three privileged resolutions and one non-privileged resolution for introduction. The resolution calling on Congress is a non-privileged resolution, so it should be held over.
Thank you very much. It will be duly noted for the record.
Did I read it out correctly, though? Okay, okay, okay.
Chief Clerk, are there any more bills and resolutions?
No.
Thank you very much. Next will be- next order of business will be reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Kathy Gilmar Richardson for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Finance, to which were referred the following bills: Bill number two-four-zero-six-six-three, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter nineteen dash thirteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Real Estate Taxes, to provide for a mechanism for informal review of individual property assessments, all under certain terms and conditions; respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation; and Bill number two-four-zero-six-five-five, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter nineteen dash thirty-two-hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Keystone Opportunities Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area, to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits under certain terms and conditions; and Bill number two-four-zero-six-six-zero, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section nineteen dash thirteen oh one point two of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Homestead Exclusion, to revise the deadline by which applications for designation of property as homestead property are due, and making conforming changes, all under certain terms and conditions; respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Finance, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmar Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of Bills number two-four-zero-six-six-zero, two-four-zero-six-five-five, and two-four-zero-six-six-three, just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes the gentleman Councilmember Phillips from the mighty Northwest for a report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. The Chair recen- uh, uh, the thank you, Council President Johnson. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Will the Chief Clerk please read the report? God bless you.
The Committee on Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs, to which was referred the following bill: Bill number two-four-zero-four-two-two, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia, to enter into a multi-year agreement with Cosmic Catering LLC for the management and operation of the Lloyd Hall Recreation Center Café, all under certain terms and conditions; respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of Bill number two-four-zero-four-two-two, just read by the Chief Clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committees with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. The Chief Clerk will please read the bill on the first reading calendar.
Bill number two-four-zero-three-oh-four, an ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, to require proof of certain insurance certificates, all under certain terms and conditions.
Bill number two-four-zero-three-zero-four will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmar Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two-four-zero-eight-two-five, two-four-zero-eight-two-six, two-four-zero-eight-two-nine, two-four-zero-eight-three-zero, two-four-zero-eight-three-one, two-four-zero-eight-three-two, two-four-zero-eight-three-eight, two-four-zero-eight-three-nine, two-four-zero-eight-four-zero, two-four-zero-eight-four-one, two-four-zero-eight-five-seven, two-four-zero-eight-six-two, two-four-zero-eight-six-three, two-four-zero-five-seven-eight, two-four-zero-six-one-one, two-four-zero-six-five-four, two-four-zero-six-five-eight, two-four-zero-six-five-nine, two-four-zero-six-six-eight, two-four-zero-six-six-nine, two-four-zero-six-seven-zero, two-four-zero-six-seven-three, and two-four-zero-six-seven-four. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: two-four-zero-seven-two-four, two-four-zero-two-four-two, two-four-zero-four-two-seven, two-four-zero-six-six-seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so by giving your name and Miss Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time may limit and vary from session to session. Today's time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see the green light on the podium when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Ashanti M. Martin. May Kate Perez, Kimmel Proctor, and Jeremy Blattstein also make their way to the podium. Ashanti M. Martin. Kate Perez, Kimmel Proctor, and Jeremy Blattstein.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President Johnson, and to the entire Philadelphia City Council for recognizing Word Radio. I- Word Radio is very proud to be here at City Council every single week without fail to keep our audience connected and informed of the important work that you're all doing. So I just want to give a shout-out to Troy Wilmore and Ernest Owens, who are here every week. City Council, as well as the City of Philadelphia, has consistently recognized the contributions, impact, and legacy of Walter P. Lomax Jr., M.D., who is the founder of Word Radio. He founded Word Radio twenty-one years ago here in Philadelphia to serve our Black community, and we continue to do so to this day. And we are looking forward to celebrating him tomorrow night at the Mann Center for our Founder's Day Gala. Word Radio President and CEO Sarah Lomax could not be here today, but she and the entire Word- but she and the entire Word Radio team, including me, Ashanti Martin, General Manager, are so grateful for this resolution from the bottom of our hearts and for this expression of appreciation and support from City Council and the City of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Kate Perez, speaking on 240674. With this consideration to electric vehicles, I hope council members consider leading a campaign to bring awareness to the slave-like conditions that the cobalt miners in Congo are subjected to, as cobalt is an essential resource used in rechargeable batteries from laptops to cars. The Green Revolution does not have to come at the expense of human rights. The climate cost of the first sixty days of Israel's genocide against Palestinians was equivalent to burning a hundred and fifty thousand tons of coals, more coals than Costa Rica burns in a year. Weapons manufacturers in our city contribute to the humanitarian and climate disaster by selling robot dogs from Johnson's district, naval guns from O'Neill's district, and M-107 tank shells from Young's district directly to the Israeli occupation. Israel's aggression has now expanded beyond Palestine to include the indiscriminate bombings of Lebanon, Syria, and Yemen. It's past time for our City Council to listen to the people, call for a ceasefire, and stop these weapons from leaving our ports. I'd like to use the rest of my time as a moment of silence to think about more, the more than two hundred thousand civilians that have already been slaughtered.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm requesting a leave of absence to attend business outside of City Hall, and I'd like to be noted as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jones, leave is granted. Very nice suit, sir. Have a good day.
We have Kimmel Proctor, Jeremy Blattstein. May Dr. Lieberman and Arjumis Figueroa also make their way to the podium.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jeremy Blattstein. Ten o'clock on the dot. We'd like to see it, Council President Johnson. Good job. I'd like to take a moment of silence for October 7th. Hamas is a terrorist organization, and they killed one thousand two hundred innocent lives and started this war that's going on in the Middle East. Thank you. What I'm here to talk about today is Turn the Key. We love to see it. Great job. There's at least forty-eight more homes, a majority of them from the Minority Development Program, but it's not enough. Turn the Key is only a small, little sliver of homes that needs to be built in the City of Philadelphia if we're going to hit Mayor Parker's goal of thirty thousand units over the next four years. How do we do that? Upzone transit corridors. Why have I been asking each and every one of you each week about CEPTA? Because if CEPTA is not funded properly and is not a working system, then there's no point of building housing along the system. So let's do it. Raise your hand if you wrote CEPTA to City Hall this morning. That's zero council members for another third week. Next week, City Council President, we're, I'm gonna meet you at a federal and tasker, and we're gonna ride up together, okay? I'll be reaching out to your office. Seven AM, okay. But how do we do this? We need upzone transit corridors, eliminate parking minimums, and bring back the ta-- ten-year tax abatement and implement the state-level tax abatement that you guys have not passed. It's passed on the state level, and now it's just waiting for you guys to pass it. And the last thing I will say is, in honor of Boots, the last fight at City Council, at, at the Wells Fargo Center was a hit. If you guys weren't there, it was awesome. He's an awesome person who represents Philadelphia. And based on the last study that was released today, and I know this, the anti-Arena people won't like this, there will be no issues with the ambulance getting to Jefferson when there's a fight in Center City on Market Street. Thank you very much.
Dr. Lieberman, may Arjumis Figueroa and Tyler Dubrowski also make their way to the podium?
Good morning. Firstly, I would like to express my deepest thank you to Councilwoman Ketzie Lozada for this recognition earlier this morning. I want to say that our Latino community faces many health challenges, but we truly value our health and well-being. And I have personally experienced the power of our community and our voices when we come together to demand what we need to be healthy. Health is a human right, but fighting to advance the public's health is not easy. So I am here today honored to accept this resolution, but I want to say that this work is not possible and will never be possible without the passion and dedication of many. Juntos somos más fuertes que solos. Together, we are stronger than alone. So I want to acknowledge and recognize the leadership at Esperanza, especially Reverend Luis Cortez, my amazing team at the Housing and Economic Development Division, my colleagues and friends at Esperanza, at Drexel, and beyond, the Esperanza Institute for Latino Health Equity Advisory Council, and importantly, the residents of Hunting Park, Feltonville, and Juniata, who remind me every day why this work is important and from whom I have so much to learn. And finally, I want to thank everyone here, the City of Philadelphia, for recognizing the health needs of our community. Thank you.
Tyler Dubrowski, one of the artistic directors at Philadelphia Theater Company. Thank you for honoring us for, as we celebrate fifty years of PTC at the Suzanne Roberts Theater on the Avenue of the Arts. Over the past fifty years, we have produced incredible works of theater that have gone on to have successful productions in New York and across the country. And we've worked with tremendous actors and artists like Audra McDonald, Terrence McNally, and Divine Joy Randolph. The most important part of the past fifty years, though, has been that Philadelphia Theater Company is a place for community and communion, a place where young people can come and learn and grow, where we can all gather to discuss and think about the crucial ideas and topics of our time, and where all people of Philadelphia can congregate to see their stories reflected back at them onstage. Philadelphia is one of the best theater cities in the country, and Philadelphia Theater Company is proud to be a leader and part of this rich, vibrant, and diverse community. Thank you so much for honoring us on our fiftieth anniversary, and here's to another fifty years.
Just so happened to be on the Avenue of the Arts. Anybody wanna, you know, do a visit to the Avenue of the Arts, Suzanne Roberts Center? You have an invitation.
Happy Thursday. I noticed that Mr. Curtis Jones had already left before I got up here. I need a solution. I have ten days to leave, and I need a solution. I have every piece of paper right here. I noticed he got up and left just before I got up here.
What's your name, ma'am?
As I just, as he seen my name on a piece of paper, but I have everything right here. I have ten days to leave. Where am I supposed to go with colorectal cancer and a service animal on the street? I noticed he left. So I'm asking for, I need a solution.
So excuse me, ma'am. My staff right here, John Christmas, could you just come around and talk to him? And then we'll talk to the Councilman's office and see how we can assist you, ma'am.
Can Melba Tyrell, Jamal Johnson, and Sharita Glenn make their way to the podium, please?
My name's Jamal Johnson. I'm here to support Councilmember Bass's resolution, 240724, strengthening of enforcement to address illegal activity in stores. I think that this will help us in our anti-gun violence efforts. But in light of the current celebrations people have been making about the decrease in homicides, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the eight hundred and sixty-one people that have been shot in our city and for the two hundred and two people that have been killed, please. Thank you. Also, I'd like to make sure that it's understood that we all still have a problem out here in Philadelphia with gun violence. It's not going away. It hasn't gotten the attention it should be getting from our elected officials, including Mayor Parker, but it still is as important as the bike lanes, as the arena, as Chinatown, as planting trees, as cleaning up trash. Unfortunately, even today, a young man is on life support at the hospital because he was shot in his head today riding a bike down on Tarssdale, Kessington. We all know about the three women that have been shot in the bus on Larchwood Avenue. We know about the young man that was just killed yesterday on Lex Street. How many homicides have we had just in this past five days? We still have a problem, but we don't act like it. And I'm just asking that you please, if you can, find it in your schedule to put in Philadelphia gun violence. Find it in your schedule to have town halls about Philadelphia gun violence. Put it in your schedule to have gatherings about Philadelphia gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We will be having a Peace Not Gun Southwest Philadelphia Community Day on October the nineteenth, and we surely invite you and the other activists that want to come out and address the issue of gun violence and resources for the community and the Second Council comedic district, that opportunity to come out and participate. And I think a couple of members introduced resolutions today regarding, I knew Councilmember Jones did, the impact on gun violence on children as well. We'll be sure to keep you addressed, abreast on the things that this illustrious body is working on as well as, as we continue to work on behalf of keeping our young people and all people safe here in the City of Philadelphia. Would a clerk please acknowledge the next esteemed individual who is at the podium?
Good morning. My name is Sharita Glenn. I am the Word Leader for the Forty-Ninth Ward of Philadelphia. I just would like to take the time to say first and foremost, thank you to City Council for having us here today. Thank you, President Kingada Johnson. I'd like to say thank you. And I'd like to thank my daughter, the Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson. And I have the privilege and honor to work with Councilwoman Cindy Bass, Councilwoman Ketzie Lozada, and Councilman Anthony Phillips. I'd like to say a special thank you to Anthony Phillips. That is why I'm here today because he has made, he, on September twenty-sixth, put the voting in for legislation to rename the street on the fifty-eight-hundred block of North Twelfth Street for the Honorable Shirley Gregory. The Honorable Shirley Gregory served the citizens of Philadelphia, our state, our federal government, for over fifty years. She has worked with Thomas Foglietta. She has worked with Congressman Bob Brady. She has been the treasurer. She has been the treasurer. There's some music. She has been the treasurer for the Democratic City Party. And I'd just like to take this time just to say thank you for all the family, friends, everyone that has assembled here today, and I thank you even for being with me. I'm here, my voice a little raspy. I had an asthma attack the other day, and I could not not be here for Ms. Shirley. So I am going to take my seat, and I just want to say thank you. I am honored and privileged, and I hope that City Council would consider naming the street in her honor. Thank you.
May Sher-- may Shelly Gregory, Charlene Bennett, and Shania Bradshaw also make their way to the podium?
Just state your name for the record, ma'am.
Kimmel Proctor.
Please begin.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to come and thank, in particular, City Councilmember Rue Landau for acknowledging this week as Digital Inclusion Week here in the City of Philadelphia. On behalf of the two thousand students that my organization, Beyond Literacy, serves annually, we appreciate the recognition of digital inclusion here in Philadelphia as a need. We don't live in a digital desert, per se, because the issue here, where we have national telecoms organizations like Comcast, firmly rooted, we have cable laid, we have access. The issue isn't just access, it's the support and the skills needed for our most marginalized and vulnerable residents to access the internet and the computers that, that we're able to provide them. As the, not just the cities, but the Commonwealth's largest adult education agency, digital skills classes are our most in-demand classes with a waiting list of over a couple hundred residents long. This is because the state does not recognize digital literacy as part of foundational literacy, but we know that in our digital age, especially post-pandemic, that digital skills are required to do online banking, online classes, online telehealth visits, and access from our most vulnerable residents, such as the unhoused, our, our immigrants, our returning citizens, our seniors, to be able to access vital resources. And so at Beyond Literacy, we're tackling the digital divide by offering not just access to free devices and low-cost internet plans, but also by bringing mobile Wi-Fi into the communities along with our digital navigators, who help provide one-on-one support to residents and community members, and then register them for the digital skills classes that they need to be able to learn how to use their computer, how to set up an email address, how to participate in a Zoom class. And so I just want to thank, again, all of our digital equity council members and champions for recognizing that digital inclusion is possible here in Philadelphia and that together we can ensure that every Philadelphian of all ages and stages has the digital skills they need. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
I just want to briefly say that, you know, Shirley Gregory has meant a lot to the Philadelphia community, particularly to the Philadelphia Democratic Party. And in terms of, this is a lady who has not only been a constant reminder of what good citizenship means, she has found ways to always let people know what is needed in our neighborhood, organize in our neighborhood to get out the vote, and also, also has been a mentor to individuals like Councilman Jim Harity and so many others across the city. She did not seek, okay, this honoring. This was be-- and that's different for some folks. She did not seek this. This is a truly a surprise. And, and I think that sometimes, because she's so humble and so caring, people forget, you know, you, you want to honor those who just put so much of that work in. And Shirley Gregory, I want to thank you for being here for myself and so many others in the City of Philadelphia, and we're looking forward to moving forward with this, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory.
Proceed, ma'am.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charlene Bennett, and I'm from the Forty-Ninth Ward, Twenty-first Division. And I'm a neighbor with Shirley Gregory. My mother lived down the street from her, and I live five blocks. We're all on Twelfth Street. And I've been in that area for forty-eight years, and I've been working the poles for forty-eight years. And I've been in that area for 48 years, and I've been working the poles for 48 years. And I have started as a machine operator. I went to a clerk, majority, judge of elections, and now I'm the committee person. And my daughter is also judge of elections for 20-something years for her, and she's young. And my nieces and my great nieces live in the next block down the street from Shirley. My brother and my sisters, they all grew up as family and friends, and Shirley has always been there for our neighbors. Any problems that we had, she took care of. We would go to her, and she would say, "I got you." And we had no problems. She had to come down to City Hall a couple times to get things straightened out, but everything was done. We appreciate her, and the years that she put in is honorable. And we all vote. We have a powerful, matter of fact, the 21st Ward is the largest voting in the city of Philadelphia. So you get more votes, and we stay active. And she takes care of senior citizens in the York House. She was always active and always present whenever they need her. And we'd like to give honors to her for her years of service. She's well appreciated, and thank you all.
Thank you. Next up is the Honorable. Go ahead, sir.
Sorry. Good morning. My name is Jeremiah Turner. I'm Shirley Gregory's grandson. I got to see a lot of what she did over the years. So I want to say she's one of the hardest-working people I've ever met. Not only that, but she has a heart to help people. She consistently looks out for the well-being of others first. She served as the leader for the 49th Ward for many years, and she would always stop by every polling place to help troubleshoot any problems or talk to anybody. She's the epitome of humility, if you know her. So naming this street after this honorable woman, I think would be given a little to someone who has given her all. So thank you for your time.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and City Council. I'm actually here on a personal note. I just happen to work in Center City. I grew up...
Go ahead, let her go. He can proceed, Lopez.
My name is Harold Tumer. I grew up next door to Ms. Gregory, Shirley Gregory. We call her Ms. Shirley. She lived at 5803. I lived at 5805. Our doors faced each other. Since I was a little kid, my mother and her were good friends, and our families kind of merged. So it was such, she has such an impact on our block, the 5800 block of 12th Street. If anyone needed anything done, they would come to her, whether it was children, adults, people from other blocks. If a stop sign was down, go see Ms. Shirley. If they were trying to get lunch program for the kids, go see Ms. Shirley. Everything was go see Ms. Shirley. And I just, I didn't know the impact of it as a kid, but when it came to poll times and election, we all had to, you know, chip in and help. She was very adamant about that, getting the vote out. She was like another pair of eyes on the block. So if my mother wasn't around, she was watching, making sure we were doing what we were supposed to do. And, you know, we were back and forth from the houses. I walked her dogs. You know, it was tremendous. And probably I wouldn't be standing here today because I'm sure she had something to do with me getting this job 35 years ago. So I just want to thank her, and I'm glad I'm a part of her legacy. Thank you.
Shelly Gregory, excuse me, Shelly Gregory, and may Shayana Bradshaw, DeWitt Tumer, and Ashley Glasgow also make their way to the podium, please.
I thank you. I thank you. I thank you because all of you have made me who I am, what I am, and why I am, and I appreciate it. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
And Ms. Gregory? Yeah, Ms. Shirley, I just want to also just thank you for your service. I know you welcomed me as a part of the Black Ward Leaders Group, you know, several years ago as a young man joining the group. So thank you for always being welcoming, supportive, and most importantly, making sure we're empowered as we addressing voter participation. Congratulations. Very well done, Councilmember Phillips.
Good morning. My name is Shania Bennett, and I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Youth Engagement. I'm glad to be testifying before City Council today on behalf of the Parker Administration supporting Councilmember Curtis's resolution, recognizing October 16th as the Day of National Concern about Young People and Gun Violence in the city of Philadelphia.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Recognizing October 16th as the Day of National Concern about Young People and Gun Violence in the city of Philadelphia. On the Day of National Concern, students in schools across the country will take a pledge against gun violence, vowing not to use guns and to settle disputes. Taking this pledge reinforces the idea that with the collective power of young people's voice and actions, we can end the culture of violence and chaos and instead chart a future of peace and productivity. Standing beside me is the Philadelphia Youth Commission. I also have some students from Richard Island Charter School upstairs. But starting October 15th, actually, the Mayor's Office of Youth Engagement, we partnered with the School District, the Mayor's Office of Education, and the Office of Public Safety, we'll launch this school safety tour. During the school safety tour, we will visit schools in each councilmatic district, so I'm plugging it right now. Councilmembers, I need y'all on my tour. And we're going to be engaging, which is going to be a part of Mayor Parker's administration to work in and make our city safer and connect them to resources and programming for our youngest constituencies. And we know that none of us can end gun violence alone. We need young people, which is why this upcoming school safety tour and this resolution is so important. So I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I want to thank Councilmember Jones, and I also want to thank the Youth Commission again. I want to thank Eric Westbrook, who's here on the Office of Public Safety and Gap of Director Gear. I want to thank the Mayor's Office of Education, Sharon Ward, who's here in the place of Dr. Carrera. I want to thank the School District of Philadelphia, Tyler Wims, who's here in place of the School District Representative. I want to also thank, again, the Richard Island Administration. I want to thank the American Paradigm Schools Administration, and I want to thank the Mayor's Office team, my team being here in the Office of Women's Engagement, the Office of Black Male Engagement, and the Office of Faith. We can't do this alone, and I want to thank you all.
That young leader just happens to be from South Philly, but talk about that. In all seriousness, Shania Bennett, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Youth Engagement, who's the young leader there, we thank you for bringing the children on for Richard Island Prep Charter School because if we're going to change this culture of violence, there's plenty seeds of positivity in our young people at an early age. And so we want to thank you and your team, Shania, for bringing them here. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President, and I promise I will not speak again during speeches. Just wanted to make sure that I got a chance to thank Ms. Gregory. Everybody knows that I pull double duty. I'm also the Executive Director for the Democratic Party. But, you know, I started with Congressman Brady when I was about 19, 20 years old. When Ms. Gregory had, when Bob first ran and won the congressional seat, Ms. Gregory had already worked for Congressman Foglietta, who was a second warder, which I was a second warder. So I got to work with Shirley Gregory from a young age. And, you know, if I had to pick one word to describe Shirley, it would be class. She is a classy lady, as the old timers used to say, very intelligent and really genuinely cared for everyone that came in contact with her. I've seen her help so many people over the years out of Congressman Brady's office. She always had time. I would actually go over and spend lunch with her a lot of time sitting in her office and just talking to her about the old days. So the experience she has and the legacy she has, it deserves to be celebrated. So Shirley, you know I love you, you know, and I always told you that. So thank you, and I'm glad that Councilman Phillips is honoring you while we still get to see you.
Would Chief Clerk please call the next person to testify?
We had Shayana Bradshaw, DeWitt Tumer, Ashley Glasgow, and then William Rotabach.
My name is Michaela Myers. Thank you, Council President, members of City Council, and everyone present. I'm honored to serve as the mayoral appointee as the Youth Commissioner for the city of Philadelphia. I'd like to thank Councilman Curtis Jones for introducing this resolution and express my gratitude to Mayor Parker, who prioritized gun violence from her office the first day. Her acknowledgement of this epidemic and the resolution before us are crucial steps forward. On September 16th, 2020, I lost my boyfriend to gun violence. His name was Jaden Lucas. At just 18 years old, on his way to college with a basketball scholarship, Jaden was tragically shot while playing basketball. His bright future was stolen in an instant. Jaden's loss is something that I carry with me every day, and so do many others in our city affected by gun violence. I share my story for all the families and young people in Philadelphia impacted by this epidemic. Acknowledgement is the first step to addressing this issue. We must focus on our youth when tackling gun violence. Initiatives like the School Safety Pledge Tour Against Violence gives young people a voice and a sense of hope, which is greatly needed in our city. This resolution recognizing October 16th as the Day of National Concern about Young People and Gun Violence highlights the challenges of our youth. But acknowledgement must lead to action. We need to provide resources and support, create safe spaces for young people to thrive, and include their voices in discussions about solutions. As a community, we must show our commitment to protecting their futures as the power to create changed lives with each and every one of you in these chambers and all of us across this city. Let this resolution serve as a foundation for meaningful actions that lead to real solutions, ones that make our communities safer and empower our young people to build a brighter future. Thank you.
State your name for the record and begin your testimony, please.
My name is Bill Rotabach. So greetings, distinguished members of council and the Philadelphia citizens that are here. I'm Bill Rotabach. I'm the plant manager of the Advancix Chemical Manufacturing Facility in Bridesburg. I'm a Frankfurt native and lifelong resident. I've spent many years of my career at this facility. I'm pleased to be here today as the Philadelphia City Council recognizes October 2024 as Manufacturing Month in the city of Philadelphia. We are honored by Councilman Driscoll's resolution declaring Manufacturing Month and highlighting Advancix for its contributions and dedication to manufacturing in the city of Philadelphia. We're a diversified chemical company that produces essential materials for its customers in a wide variety of end markets and applications that touch people's lives. Our history can be traced back to the H.W. Jane Company, which was established at the very site that we're at right now in 1884. We're proud to play a role in the history and the future of manufacturing in Philly. We're a member of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Manufacturing Alliance, and this partnership, among other things, has led to increased wages and reduced staff turnover. We also have the opportunity to have co-ops and internships at the facility to encourage young people to consider manufacturing. We're excited. We just started hosting interns from Science Leadership Academy at our plant this month, and that will go through this year, and we also have Drexel co-ops on site. So it's important to highlight the local career possibilities in manufacturing for our young people and the next generation of workers in this industry. It's important, we're not just a manufacturer in the community, we're members of the community, and we believe in being good neighbors. We're active with the Bridesburg Boys and Girls Club, the Bridesburg Elementary, among other places. Our employees work hard each day to ensure the safe, stable, unsustainable operations that our customers rely on and our community expects. So thank you again for this recognition and for this time to speak today.
May Jeremy Williams, Wanda Walker, and Vanessa Brown also make their way to the
Williams, I would like to thank for the opportunity to speak in front of council today. I'd like to thank Councilperson Rue Landau. I'm here with National Coming Out Day, Philly Pride 365, and coming out. National Coming Out Day is this week, October 11th, and LGBTQ History Month is all the month of October. I'm very proud to be just one of the producers for the very large event that will be happening this weekend, my partner Tyrell Brown. He, they, the two of us have really come together to really produce something amazing, and I'm really excited. One of the things that I wanted to share with everyone here is coming out in the queer community is sometimes very, very, very difficult. People go through therapy and everything that's involved with it. So having events and festivals around that really helps bring the community together. I was very lucky. I didn't necessarily have to come out. I've been out my entire existence, and the funny story is, is I've never told, even told my mother that I am gay. She does live with us, with my husband and my child, so I'm pretty sure she knows, but I've never had to actually step out, like many other people have had to do. So I'm very excited to be producing this event, to give a community a light to shine, to be able to come out and be a part of community. So thank you all, and thank you all for your support of this event. It's really wonderful.
Wanda Walker and Vanessa Brown.
Morning, beautiful people. My name is Wanda Walker. I've been here since we restarted in late summer, and I'm going to keep coming every single time because what I see at City Council is every time we're here on Thursday, properties and land is being given away to the land bank, and that concerns me. As a small landlord, I know a lot of the things that you all pass here affect us, and small landlords supply 64% of the low-income and underprivileged housing. So it's very important that when these decisions are being made, you have someone like me at the table to speak our truth because once we're gone, there is no competition for the developers to keep their prices reasonable, and already they're not reasonable. Our prices are, and we should be supported, and we're not getting that. I want to better understand what's going on here, so I'll be coming the next 10, 15 Thursdays to try to speak to every single councilperson myself so that they understand fully what's really going on and how fast we're losing properties. We're being forced to sell, or we're losing properties because we can't keep up with all the bills, the taxes, the regulations, and therefore that is speeding gentrification, and that's why our numbers are dropping. If you don't own anything, you're not at the table, you're on the menu. This is very important. It concerns me because I have many seniors that call me complaining, and it's heartbreaking to see that someone has worked all their life, paid off something in full, and can't keep it and enjoy it because of things like taxes. You should not have to go to a meeting to ask for a discount. No senior should even be paying property taxes in Philly because we give out abatements. And again, there are 23,000 buildings in Philadelphia that are exempt every single year, and their value is $30 billion. And if you did just a flat tax, you would raise over $150 million. So we need to spread the responsibility. It should not fall on seniors, and it should not fall on struggling business owners and properties. I also want to say, Councilman, or President, President Councilman Jones, are you aware that there is a gun violence, something or other going on at the Hilton, at City Line Avenue? Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew. Thank you, and I'll see you next Thursday.
Thank you very much.
I am Vanessa Lowry Brown, Councilman.
The Honorable Vanessa Lowry Brown. Hello, welcome.
Yes, President. Thank you for having me. I'd like to just acknowledge Councilman Jeffrey Young for putting up Indigenous Peoples' Day today. We are so proud of you. You stand on the legacy of so many others from Senator Sharice Street, his father, Mayor Street, our Indigenous not be, Councilwoman Janie Black... our Indigenous Anapi, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell is also Indigenous, and all of the great work of Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown to help keep Indigenous Peoples' agendas to the table. And I'd just like to thank you for continuing that legacy of good work. I also have to give honor to my grandmothers, in particular Addie Conyers, who told me I was Native. I didn't get to grow up in a tradition of being Native because it wasn't a good thing to do. We had to hide who we were in order to exist and to be, you know, alive in most cases. I'd also like to thank also Pocahontas, who I reconnected with as an adult, who showed me the path back to who I am. And I'm grateful for that legacy. She has transitioned, and I want to give honor to her today. This is just a heavy day for me because there's so much to carry from a legacy of so many years. This resolution helps to set some things straight for the last 400 years. But we've been here for thousands of years. The resolution also identifies 50,000 people who identify as Indigenous, but there's so many more people who could identify if they knew how to. On many of our surveys that we get, they ask you, are you African-American? How do you identify? Are you European? Are you Indigenous? It only allows you, in most cases, one box to check. So there are hundreds of thousands of people who are Indigenous, who because they are Afro-Indigenous, often are, to put, African-American. So I just want to set the record straight that there are so many more of us that are here in the state of Pennsylvania and in the United States of North and South America. I'd like to also, before I forget, to invite all of you to celebrate Indigenous ancestry with us at Bartram's Gardens this Sunday from 11:00 to 5:00. We will be there in traditional regalia, our attire. We will speak in Native tongue. We will be dancing, storytelling, and we would like to include the entire community to be a part of that beautiful celebration. We have been fighting for Indigenous heritage for so many years, and I'm just so grateful to be a leader in the City of Philadelphia to keep this narrative alive. And I want to thank you also in Harrisburg with me, Councilman Driscoll, and you voted for us for Indigenous ancestry acknowledgement here in the state of Pennsylvania. So thank you for your contributions as well. I'm going to keep my comments short. I'm just grateful to be here today, and best thank you so much for what you've done. Thank you.
Council President, there are no other names for public comment.
Thank you very much. That concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-825?
A resolution renaming 5800 North 12th Street to Shirley Gregory Way in honor of her remarkable contributions to the community and her lifelong dedication to public service.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-825.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution. Thank you.
It has been moved and enthusiastically properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-825 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-826?
A resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on enhancing efficiency and transparency in municipal services to analyze and recommend ways to enhance the efficient and effective delivery of municipal services, identify optimal models and tools to improve transparency and communication with residents regarding the submission, follow-up, and tracking of city service requests, and propose legislative and administrative policy reforms to eliminate barriers that impede the efficient delivery of services.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-826.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-826 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-829?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 839 North 39th Street, 3938 Mount Vernon Street, 3940, 3944 Mount Vernon Street, 3907, 3930 Wallace Street, 3833, 3902, 3912, 3922 Brown Street, 908 and 910 North Holly Street, 3948 Parrish Street, 4117, 4119, 4121, 4146 Pens Grove Street, 3814, 3816, 3850, 3852, 3947, 3949, 3960, 3962, 3964 Reno Street, 666, 674, and 803 Union Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-829.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Resolution Number 240-829 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-830?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 3924 Cambridge Street, 3909 Pens Grove Street, 1110, 1112, 1113, 1118, 1128 State Street, 3900, 3902, 3911, 3912, 3919, and 3926 Yale Ousing Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-830.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-830 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-831?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 844 Hutton Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-831.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-831 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-832?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 3958 Parrish Street, 3900 Reno Street, 3972 Reno Street, 844 Hutton Street, and 855 North 43rd Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-832.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Resolution Number 240-832 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-838?
A resolution calling upon the Department of Prisons and the Office of Reentry Partnerships to work in collaboration with local resource providers to develop a distribution process of reentry resource packages for individuals released from incarceration.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded. The resolu-- thank you very much. Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-838 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-839?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3148 North 24th Street, located in the 4th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-839.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-839 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-840?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 116 North 58th Street in the 4th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-840.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-840 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-841?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 138 North 58th Street, 6214 Vine Street, and 3212 North 33rd Street in the 4th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple titles to such property pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-841.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-841 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-857?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying titles to 2917, 2919, 2937, and 2939 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-857.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-857 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-862?
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass legislation prohibiting the use and sale of software that uses algorithms to anti-competitively set rental rates, fees, and occupancy levels.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rourke for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-862.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-862 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240-863?
A resolution renaming the 6100 block of North 21st Street Reverend Kiotis Pryor Way to honor the life and contributions of Reverend Kiotis L. Pryor, the late trailblazing pastor of the Corinthian Baptist Church.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240-863.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Resolution Number 240-863 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-578?
An ordinance authorizing 5217 Whitby Mount Mariah LLC or a subsequent owner to install, own, and maintain an encroachment at 5217 through 5219 Whitby Avenue under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-611?
An ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, replacement, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 615 North Broad Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Losada. Councilmember Landau, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-654?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 1320 Cotman Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19111, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? The Chief Clerk please read, call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla. Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-658?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 3527 through 31 Lancaster Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19104, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-659?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 3200 Testnut Street, Philadelphia, PA 19104, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the Chief Clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada. Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240-668?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 1601 South 10th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19148, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones was aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero six six nine?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a marquee canopy in the vicinity of twenty-six-fifty-four South Alder Street, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one-four-eight, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Not for now, for later.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the next bill of two four zero six seven zero?
An ordinance amending section twelve dash seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to add a bicycle lane on South Third Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero six seven three?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations, one-way regulations, and the designation of a bicycle lane in the vicinity of Maplewood Avenue from Green Street to Wayne Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two four zero six seven four?
An ordinance rescinding bill number two four zero five hundred and amending Title Nine of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter creating requirements related to the operation and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations installed at certain commercial and residential parcels, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would a chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones, aye. Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Losada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Member Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are fifteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. We will now consider privileged resolutions. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Mural Arts Philadelphia for four decades of transforming communities through public art and social engagement introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Word Radio on the occasion of their Founder's Day, which memorializes the late owner-founder Walter P. Lomax Jr., M.D., and recognizing the station's role as the voice of the African-American community introduced by Councilmember Phillips on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold quarterly hearings that include monthly reporting requirements to discuss the fiscal position overarching social impact goals of the city, including and as related to the five-year plan and reporting requirements set forth in the Quarterly City Manager's Report and is submitted to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring and recognizing the members of the Links Incorporated Philadelphia Chapter and Delaware Valley Chapter introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, as the day of national concern about young people and gun violence in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing National Coming Out Day on October eleventh, twenty-twenty-four in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing October seventh to October eleventh, twenty-twenty-four as Digital Inclusion Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing the week of October sixth through October twelfth as Emergency Nurses Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution joining the city of Pittsburgh and calling on Congress to- Just pause, Council President.
Counsel will be at ease.
I'm sorry, Council President. This was a non-privileged resolution. I misspoke earlier.
This resolution will be placed on next week's final passage calendar. Please proceed.
A resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating President Jimmy Carter for his historic one-hundredth birthday introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Philadelphia, honoring and commemorating the achievements, traditions, and contributions of American Indians also known as Indigenous Peoples introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, when the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The clerk- The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution.
Council President, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring and celebrating Elizabeth Taylor, tenth and eleventh grade social studies teacher at Masterman High School and recipient of the twenty-twenty-four David McCullough Teacher Prize for Excellence in American Public History introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
It has, it has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the most, and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing and honoring Tim Witherspoon for his legacy as a two-time heavyweight world champion introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving properties seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution recognizing September thirtieth through October sixth, twenty-twenty-four as Week Without Driving in the city of Philadelphia honoring all Philadelphians who participated and encouraging all Philadelphians to join efforts to reduce reliance on automobiles and fossil fuels introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The chair recognizes Councilman O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing, oh, I did, I read that one already, sorry. A resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia Theater Company on the occasion of its fiftieth anniversary introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of that resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor when the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing the month of October twenty twenty four as Manufacturing Month in the city of Philadelphia and further honoring Avan Six for its contributions and dedication to the manufacturing industry in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing October twenty twenty four as Polish-American Heritage Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution designating the week of Sunday, October thirteenth through Saturday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty four as Italian-American Heritage Week in the city of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Show some love for the Italian Heritage community, y'all. I mean, we clapping for everybody. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing and honoring Jaren Boots Ennis, the reigning International Boxing Federation, IBF World Welterweight Champion for his outstanding achievements in professional boxing and work in the community introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing October tenth as World Mental Health Day and National Depression Screening Day in Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Will the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a resolution recognizing October twenty twenty four as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and promoting activities that provide education, early detection, and support for all introduced by Councilmember Ahmad on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
I, I thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution on your behalf.
Thank you. It has been moved on property seconded that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted.
There, there are no other resolutions in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on part of the minority? The chair recognizes minority leader Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I am introducing a resol- resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia. Next week, I hope my council colleagues will join me in wearing purple in honor of survivors of domestic violence and in memory of those who did not survive. I'm also co-introducing a resolution with Councilmember Landau to recognize this Friday, October eleventh, as National Coming Out Day in Philadelphia. Uh, for over thirty years, National Coming, Coming Out Day has been a day to celebrate freedom and pride and to acknowledge the fear and discrimination that still exists and to show our support for the LGBTQ plus equality. Despite decades of progress, National Coming Out Day is just as important this year as it has been in the past. Last October, I recognized National Coming Out Day. In twenty twenty three, the ACLU was tracking five hundred and ten pieces of anti-LGBTQ plus legislation, including three right here in Pennsylvania. And this year, the number has grown to five hundred and thirty nationwide and five bills here in Pennsylvania. Targeting queer and trans youth has been a popular campaign strategy this election season with hateful rhetoric that directly impacts the many young people who are struggling with bullying, depression, and even thoughts of suicide. So just, so this year, just as years pass, I am proud to co-introduce this resolution and to call on Philadelphians to join me in affirming and supporting the LGBT community. And lastly, on Saturday, I will be hosting our, uh, annual, uh, wingahockin' neighbor's day celebration, so any of my colleagues that are available to come out between twelve and three, I'm celebrating my community with food and entertainment and a play street and all the resources, um, that are available. So if you're available, please come by and thank you, Council President. That's it.
You're welcome. The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is another word from the minority, and today that word is light, light. Veritas, say again. Come on, somebody. Veritas et lux recta et honor. That's Latin for truth and light, law and honor. It's inscribed on the presidential seal of my alma mater. It is October. You can feel it in the air and in the chamber. Uh, that also means it's HBCU, uh, homecoming month, and my great Central State University rising out of the cradle of Wilberforce University, uh, will be celebrating its homecoming this weekend. I wore my maroon and gold tie in honor of that and keeping the light in my mind. I wanted to just share briefly that of one hundred and thirty-seven years of truth and light at Central State, uh, want to echo that is also, uh, celebrate, uh, the Philadelphia Theater Company, who we, uh, honor today for fifty years of, and of, in it, in its own way shedding light here in the city of Philadelphia. Uh, it is true that, uh, humans come to understand things less by facts and figures and more by narratives and story. Um, for peoples who have not had the privilege of former love educa- education, movies and skits and plays, um, uh, turn, tend to be ways that we come to, to grasp things, to understand the world, uh, and our place in it, and we witness, uh, help, uh, uh, these plays, uh, bear witness to help us to see and understand ourselves in the world. I was thinking about Baldwin, uh, who wrote one time that you, you think you, uh, uh, your pain and your heartbreak are unprecedented in the history of the world, and then you read. Uh, I think the same could be said, you, you could think that your pain and heartbreak are unprecedented in the history of the world, and then you see a play, because sometimes it can help you understand its value. So, so grateful for the work that they have done in our city, continue to do in many more years, uh, of their shedding light in that regard. I also want to thank, uh, uh, and appreciate the light that has been shed by Otis, uh, with their challenge that they have given us with the Week Without Driving. I had the, um, the benefit of participating in that, and I can tell you that, uh, I'll be honest, it was certainly a change of pace for me. Uh, I am, uh, 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 molded in, in a place where driving is normal, uh, but I think, um, it is, it really has been helpful and again, illuminating, clarifying, uh, the realities of those who do not drive. Um, Otis's challenge was a smaller individual, individual way to remind us of Scepter's inherent benefits as well as the joys of simply walking. Y'all know Philadelphia is a neighborhood town. If you get out and walk a little bit, you see a whole lot more than you, than you think you would see. Um, ultimately, I believe a city with less cars and more foot traffic will be better for our civic life and our climate. And I also just say that getting out and, and, and biking too, uh, will help you to see real clear and real quick how dangerous it is to, 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 to bike and to, to commute around the city without an automobile. So I want to just thank again Otis for the challenge that they issued with this Week Without Driving, because it certainly has illuminated for me the struggles of many in our city who do not drive. Shifting quickly and ending here, um, on a bit more reflective note, again, thinking about shining a light, um, I think, um, many of us, um, may have paid attention to the news in the past few weeks, um, in what took place, um, with Marcellus Khalifa Williams in Missouri. This brother was executed by the state of Missouri in a case that the prosecutors themselves wouldn't stand by as the execution date drew nearer and closer. Khalifa, we say, we speak his name today, was in fact a faith leader. He became the Imam for his fellow Muslim inmates at Patosi Correctional Center. And as I'm mindful of this, um, that many recognize as a tragedy, I'm reminded that Pennsylvania still has the seventh largest death row in the country with ninety-six individuals currently sitting on death row right now, though no execution since the late nineties. Since two thousand and fifty, people have had their death sentences reversed in Pennsylvania as courts found serious legal errors in the inmates' original trials. On October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the Pennsylvania House Judiciary Committee voted fifteen to ten in favor of HB nine-nine-nine sponsored by State Representative Chris Rab. And so again, of course, the, the clearest way that this has cropped up in politics again has, has, uh, at least in Philadelphia, we, we hear of many folks who have been, uh, dealing with this and raising this. I just wanted to make sure that we echo that the Commonwealth has started to see the light from recent action on expungement to freeing juvenile lifers and more, formally and finally ending the death penalty as the next step is something that we should be doing. So I just want to raise this point up, uh, that we should, uh, never take our eyes off the prize as it relates to, to preserving life in the Commonwealth. Too many folks are dying at the hands of the state that do not need to be. And so I just want to call that out. And in conclusion, as we think about death and dying, I want to echo and continue what has been said, what's been ed- uh, echoed today and will continue to be echoed through the various events that people are participating in and, uh, ways that they're speaking out about the gun violence in our city. Um, it is no, it, it is not a, um, a, a topic that isn't spoken on here in the chamber. I know that there may be a, opinion out there that exists that somehow we're not doing anything related to that, but I just want to say that, um, we continue to, to shy the light, shine the light on that gun violence. I was mindful of, uh, Mayor Randall Woodfin, uh, a few weeks back, um, who referenced gun violence as an American epidemic, and he saw Birmingham as just the tip of that spear. And it, it moved me to just make sure that, that, that the good mayor down in Alabama knew that, that we lawmakers up here in, in Pennsylvania also are working on that front to see to it that we, uh, that we, that we, that we realize a better city. Um, let me just state that state preemption on gun laws, as we all know, is the major logjam for change in Philly on this front. Uh, darn near every single one of us on council wishes that we could change that, but the Pennsylvania Republicans derive special pleasure, it seems to me, from refusing help to Philadelphia. So, um, let us continue to keep our eyes on the prize, recognize where the logjam actually is and work in all the places that we can to see to it that we have a safer city, uh, and that we can continue to shine light on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the majority that the chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just want to thank our colleagues today for, uh, passing the Special Committee on Transparency Resolution that I tasked force. Uh, basically, it's a creation of a special committee on enhancing efficiency and transparency in municipal services. This is incredibly important. Uh, city council is here to conduct, uh, public hearings as well as review bills that relate to issues in the city of Philadelphia. And one of the reasons why I decided to run, uh, for council had a lot to do with the fact that I'm a firm believer in how do we get closer to ridding bureaucracy, right? And finding ways to make things a lot more efficient. And a lot of times, we have systems in place that are not best serving our residents. And so what this task force does, it involves a collective, uh, group of individuals who are concerned about how council residents, collectively, working with residents, council, the administration, and so forth, to come up with understanding of how do you create better follow-up mechanisms, uh, for our city? On a day-to-day basis, you know, we have people, and it's very clear that we're behind when it comes to speed cushion requests, we're behind when it comes to tree requests, uh, tree clipping requests, we're behind with a lot of different city services that people constantly call our offices on. And the reason has to do with things out of our control. And so we have to come up with a lot better system where we're, we're helping residents understand why their requests may be delayed and then finding ways to, you know, just help be more transparent, um, with them about how do we make our city, uh, more efficient? And I, we, we, this task force is also going to take, and ideas, um, from residents as well, uh, because we do want to be a first-class city, and I just want to work together, uh, with all of council and, uh, the residents and administration to make sure that we, uh, we're all on the same page, how we make our city even stronger in this regard. So thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, Council President. When I served as the Executive Director of the Sustainable Business Network, one of my proudest achievements was working with then-Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez to expand the Sustainable Business Tax Credit. As the leader of SBN, it was my job to help our region's diverse, independent businesses to do well by doing good. This included advocating for an economic ecosystem that centered localism, serving community needs, sharing wealth, and protecting our environment. As the Chair of the Committee on the Environment, I understand that nothing is more make or break for the future of our city than climate change. This legislative body must encourage our private sector partners to be a part of the climate solution and reward those who prioritize a triple bottom line of people, planet, and profit. For more than a decade, the city of Philadelphia did just that through its Sustainable Business Tax Credit, which gave sustainable businesses a four thousand dollar credit against their burden, easing the tax burden on local entrepreneurs who did right by their communities. But the initial version of the Sustainable Business Tax Credit expired at the end of tax year twenty twenty-two. Since then, my team has been working with SBN and other stakeholders to bring it back in an enhanced and permanent way. If enacted into law, my bill restores the Sustainable Business Tax Credit without a sunset date, increases the maximum credit from four thousand to eight thousand dollars, removes the cap on the number of participating businesses, and cuts red tape to streamline the certification process. By restoring the Sustainable Business Tax Credit, city council will make our local economy and neighborhoods more climate resilient, uplifting our neighborhood businesses, and healing our planet at the same time. And how's that for a day's work? I want to thank my cosponsors, Councilmembers Jones, Landau, Phillips, Squilla, Brooks, and O'Rourke. I want to thank the team at the Sustainable Business Network for leading this effort and for everything they do to achieve a just, green, and thriving economy. And lastly, thank you to every sustainable business owner listening here or at home. We salute you for staying true to the triple bottom line of people, planet, and profit, even as inflation and rising costs make doing so harder than ever. I want our hard-working neighborhood business owners to know that if you have our communities back, we will have yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk, the chair recognizes Councilman Nina Ma.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, today, we just passed a bill adding enforcement provisions to LNI regarding the maintenance of EV charging systems. Uh, this bill establishes a more concrete pathway for the city to oversee, uh, the maintenance of electric vehicle chargers, something that is already, um, governed by federal laws but not codified in Philadelphia. We would like to thank the administration and LNI for working closely with us to develop this piece of legislation, and I look forward to working with them to democratize the use of EZ, the further use of EVs. And I want to really connect this to what my colleague just spoke about, uh, sustainability. And as this country now in Florida is facing, uh, hurricane, um, what's its name? Battling the hurricane? Milton, and we just recover, we're just recovering from Hurricane Helene, it really underscores the point that fossil fuels are most responsible for our climate crisis. And that's why we need to look at these measures of reducing our carbon footprint, and this bill will, uh, further that effort, and there will be more bills to come. But I think we all need to not only remember all those who are fighting for their lives, literally, uh, as this, um, storm battens down on them, but what we need to do collectively, uh, for the, not just for the, our, our nation, but for the globe, that we need to really address climate change with an urgency. So I thank you, and I want to just speak to two other things about our mental health , uh, resolution and the breast cancer resolution we passed today. Uh, that really underscores, we have to look at the whole, uh, person in terms of health, both mental and physical, and I hope the city of Philadelphia, uh, looks to make sure that we are attending to both parts of our being, and we use this bill to further all the resources available to Philadelphians. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to, um, once again, thank those individuals who we recognize during the twenty twenty-four Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, my team and I had a challenging time trying to figure out who we would recognize because there are so many Latinos across the city of Philadelphia who are doing some amazing work. Um, but we hope that, uh, all of you were able to learn a little bit more about the individuals that we, um, that we were able to recognize this year. Um, and we appreciate and thank all of you for, um, joining us as we celebrate them and their contributions to the city of Philadelphia. Um, I'd also like to thank you, Council President, for taking time out of your busy schedule to walk with me, um, in the Seventh Council District yesterday along, uh, Kensington, um, and visiting Conwell School where we had a student town hall, um, and, and where you were able to hear from the voices of children and their experiences, um, and their challenges in their day-to-day as they navigate through, um, what is still a very big problem, uh, in the Kensington Harrogate community. Um, but where we have made some strides, we have a lot of work to do, but we have, uh, made some strides, and we were able to talk to businesses about some of the differences that they're seeing, and so I appreciate you, I appreciate your support, um, and I look forward to continuing to, uh, work towards restoring, um, and reimagining the Seventh Council District and the Kensington Harrogate Community. Extremely grateful for you. Um, I'd also like to invite my colleagues to an event that is happening today, um, as we continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, we are, uh, set, we are having an event, uh, with Latinos in government, uh, today from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Comcast Technology Center at eighteen-hundred Arch Street. Um, please feel free to stop by and join us and learn a little bit more about, uh, where Latinos are in city government and what they do. Um, and then I'd also like to invite everyone to a property tax relief workshop, um, in partnership with Council President Quinata Johnson in the Seventh Council District on Wednesday, October sixteenth, from six to eight PM at West Kensington Ministries, twenty-one forty North Hancock Street. Uh, if your, if your residents can't get to the workshop that has been coordinated in your districts or in your community, please feel free to invite them to join us on Wednesday, October sixteenth at West Kensington Ministry. Uh, all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, today, I introduce a resolution to recognize the week of October seventh to eleventh as Digital Inclusion Week in the city of Philadelphia. As Chair of the Technology and Information Services Committee, I know that we're living in a pivotal time for digital inclusion. The importance of digital equity, digital literacy, and increasing digital equity solutions cannot be understated. Too many Philadelphians face difficulties when attempting to access digital resources and tools due to inadequate digital literacy, lack of the devices, and limited internet access. We must work for a city in a future where everyone has the opportunity to utilize technology in order to live, learn, work, and thrive. Today, I also introduce a resolution recognizing tomorrow, October, October eleventh, as National Coming Out Day in Philadelphia. Big surprise, everyone. I'm gay, coming out now. The meaning of this day is to celebrate the strength and courage of, of sharing of one's sexual orientation or gender identity with friends and family. It's also a reminder that homophobia and, and transphobia and shame thrive in silence. Being our authentic selves is not always easy, and for many, it's still often not safe. Coming Out Day is a one-day celebration, but for LGBTQ people plus people around the world and right here in Philadelphia, it's a reminder of the importance of living authentically the other three hundred and sixty-four days a year. I want to personally thank my colleagues for always being so wonderful and supportive of me and the larger community, and to tell you that Our Fest is happening this Sunday in the Gabriel Hood in the afternoon. Please come on out, celebrate, have some fun with us. And finally, right after council today, just a reminder, I'm having a briefing on youth homelessness, and it was, it's a briefing put on by Philly Homes for Youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to thank my colleagues today, uh, for, uh, passing the resolution honoring, um, former President Jimmy Carter for his one-hundredth birthday. Uh, he's our oldest, uh, living president, um, so to have someone, uh, hit that century mark, um, and, and still, uh, be relevant today, um, I, I think, it was just prudent for us to really honor him. His birthday was actually October the first. Um, and I think that, you know, he, he well deserved this particular honor from, from our legislative body. I also want to thank my colleagues today for passing the resolution honoring, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day. There are buildings across our city, um, that will be lighting up, um, in the color of purple, um, to acknowledge and celebrate, uh, the rich and living cultural heritage of American Indians, um, and the indigenous communities, um, across our country. Uh, so that, those buildings include the Philadelphia Airport, um, the Pico Building, uh, Bohouse Road will be lit up, um, just to name a few. And as you, we all know, around our city, um, plenty of our streets are named, um, uh, in honor of, uh, the American Indian indigenous tribes, so, um, their, the culture, um, is, is embedded here in, in the city of Philadelphia. Also, I want to thank, uh, my colleagues for passing the resolution today, um, honoring Emergency Nurses Week. Um, I want to thank the Pennsylvania Association of Staff Nurses and Allied Professionals. Um, specifically, I want to thank the Temple University Hospital Nurses Association. Specifically, I want to thank the Temple University Hospital Nurses Association and all the nurses in hospitals and emergency departments in hospitals like CHOP, St. Christopher's, University of Penn, and the like across our city, because they do yeoman's work. You know, as the resolution states today, you know, nurses in the ER don't have the luxury of being specialized and want expertise, they have to do a variety of tasks, they don't only deal with the physical injuries, they deal with the emotional injuries. Everyone who goes into an ER, emergency department knows how emotional that is, they have to deal with life-saving issues. So I just wanted to thank them, because without them, we would not be where we are today. Temple University is one of the hospitals where folks come from across the world to get training in gunshots, right, and gunshot wounds, and how to treat gunshot wounds, just because the nurses and the doctors there are so proficient with it, are able to save lives because of their proficiency. So I just wanted to honor them today. I'm going to thank them on the Emergency Nurses Week. And lastly, you know, I want to thank our colleague, Councilman Jones, for his resolution today, you know, recognizing youth gun violence. And this past weekend in my district, in the Spring Garden Apartments, also known as Penn Town, there was a seventeen-year-old girl killed, a sixteen-year-old girl shot that was in critical condition, and a twenty-one-year-old male shot as well. And this is the second shooting incident in as many weeks in that community. So we are in a state of emergency on gun violence, and we need every resource available for Penn Town, because if we're having these shootings, which seems like weekly, they're not going to stop, they're all retaliatory, we know what's going on. Can we please focus on some resources to get down to this part of the, of North Philadelphia? You know, every citizen deserves to be safe, and I think that, you know, we as a body, I want to commend my members, because we as a body have not let up on this issue of gun violence, but we have to do more in order to save our children, because it is our children who is dying from this epidemic of gun violence. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for always being a leader in this effort in this city, and I look forward to coming out to your event in southwest Philly.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank you for acknowledging the work that nurses are doing in the ER rooms as it relates to gun violence on an everyday basis, so that should be duly noted. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jay Young. There are no more speeches. And before I call for adjournment, just want to acknowledge the hard work and leadership of Councilwoman Ketsi Lozada. I did have an opportunity to walk on the streets of Kensington with her, talking to business owners, talking to a couple individuals I ran into from the neighborhood, but most importantly, some bright spots with the workers that work at McPherson Square Library, having an opportunity to speak to the inspiring, empowering, and most importantly, young people who challenged us to continue doing more, young people who actually live in the community, who really gave us some mature questions, but most importantly, challenged us to step up to the plate and do more. And so it was a very, very empowering experience to you from Conwell Magnet Middle School. And so I want to thank you for that experience, but also thank you for the lunch at a jewel in Kensington, which is Cantina La Martina Restaurant. And so, and a great vegetarian burrito, and some pico de gallo, and some guacamole, and so I had a good time. And so just want to thank you, and I continue to work with the Kensington Caucus as we address and improve the quality of life for the people in Kensington. And I just want to thank Councilman Rulandau for hosting on the roundtable discussion around children homelessness. And I'm glad that you picked up on it, because I know there was a report in the newspaper as of recently that homelessness is on the rise here in the city of Philadelphia, and I was waiting to see at what point in time that we would actually pick up on it, because we are an action-oriented body, and we're always stepping up and taking the lead around this issue, especially in the spirit of our Housing Chair, Councilman Jamie Gardier, Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, and the work that Majority Leader Councilman Catherine Gilmore Richardson has done around the Office of Homeland Services. And so I just want to thank you for organizing around that issue in any way that we could be supportive beyond the roundtable. When the action actually starts, your Council President and your members will be backing your support when it comes to our young people addressing the issue of homelessness in the here in the city of Philadelphia. I want to personally say thank you. And also, I just want to thank Councilwoman Nina Ma, just around the issue of EV charging stations in the city of Philadelphia and making sure we become a more modern, in the spirit of Deputy O'Rourke fossil fuel-friendly, clean environment. And so I told my children a couple months ago, when it was during the wintertime, they asked me, how come we didn't have any snow? And I said, climate change is real, right? They are not experiencing the snow blazes that we used to years ago growing up here in the city of Philadelphia. And so I just want to thank you for your efforts to make sure we're well-prepared to take this city to the next level when it comes to addressing EV charging stations and our infrastructure and our fleet, so our fleet can be more supportive of our environment as opposed to being detrimental. With that being said, the Chair would like to recognize Councilmember and Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 17th, 2024, at 10:00 AM.
It has been moving properly, seconding that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October 17th, 2024, at 10:00 AM. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much.